Good evening. Clerk?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Sunshine Law Notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the clerk's, city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise with a flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay, there's no minutes to approve this evening. The city manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First tonight, order of business, I'd like to introduce our new CFO who came tonight, Jim Mangan, if you don't mind standing up for a second. Everyone, I'd like to introduce Jim, he's our new CFO starting on Monday. Good luck to you, Jim.
Now, now, Regina.
First order of business after that, on our agenda, I'd like to discuss the snowstorm last weekend. I want to commend everyone, Tony, Jesse, Art, guys worked throughout the night, I was down here for about thirty-six hours straight, trying to make sure the streets were clean, we had plenty of salt, they were covered all night long, had a few complaints about some potholes that are starting to develop, it's been a brutal winter. So, if everyone has a pen handy, I've got a hotline that you can call for the city that you can report potholes as they come up. As of this morning, this line was supposed to be ready to roll around twelve o'clock today, so if you call tomorrow, it should be good. It's (201) 646-8058, and that's a DPW pothole hotline, so you can report them, so you see anything, we can try to take care of it right now and right away, with cold patch this time of the year, and as it warms up, we'll pull the cold patch up and do it the right way, or the more permanent way, I should say. On the next note, I'd like to report that we also received the two outstanding SRO payments, we were paid in full, I want to thank everybody for their help, we had a few adjustments to have it get straight for process, but now it looks like we'll be on a regular rotation without problem. The hospital owed us one hundred and eight thousand, about one hundred and eight thousand six hundred dollars for our fire truck being up on the scene, up at the hospital, that had a problem with one of their pumps, and they paid us, we owed the money for about sixty days. They were kind enough to get us a check a few days ago, they paid us in full the whole hundred and eight thousand. On a better note, I have a check here that I'd like to present to the mayor and council for one million dollars, made out to the city of Hackensack from Avalon Bay Communities. This check could go into the affordable housing fund that was set up, this money could be used to improve, create, and manage the affordable housing stock that the city has, and add more units, rehab what we have, but it's a million dollars that Avalon Bay put in lieu of putting affordable housing out of their new community, they put this for us, so mayor, deputy mayor, council, I'd like to, I'll give it to the clerk on your behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just on a note, there's a lot of work went into that, there was a, there's a lot of loopholes statewide to set up that fund correctly, get it recognized.
Yes.
The fund was actually set up, but to get it recognized and by the state was a little bit of work, and I want to thank everybody involved in that, there were a lot of people involved so that we could recoup that money, because if, basically if that didn't happen, the developer would have, could have walked away without paying that million dollars, and that was part of the developer's agreement from day one. So, we fought hard for that and we got it, so thank you very much.
And a last note of business, spoke to, yesterday I had a department head meeting, I spoke to the library, and the library offers a lot of programs that the general public may not be aware of, they offer computer skills, resume writing online, job search, downloading, setup mobile devices, downloading library ebooks, music, et cetera. You can call the library at (201) 343-4169 and ask for Sharon or Barb, or you could just show up there as well, and if you're first come, first served basis, but these are good, good, excuse me, programs for people in the community that want to, if you get a new phone, you're not too quite sure how to use it, instead of paying, you know, the Apple Store ninety-nine dollars to use it, you can go there at any time, it's a free service, so I wanted to point that out, there's a great thing that they have there that a lot of people don't know about. The library is fantastic, I don't know if anybody's been there lately, but they offer a lot of really good things for the community. And on that note, mayor, I'd like to turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. First resolution is, what's number six on the docket, resolution one-two-zero-one-four.
Okay, it's final adoption of ordinance number one dash two-zero-one-four, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to repeal and replace Chapter 176 entitled Regulation of News Racks. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, at this time, anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please step forward.
You say repeal the regulation that was set into uniform all the news racks and have, or this is to set it into place, I thought, I heard.
This is the final reading of an ordinance to, to put in the new news rack ordinance.
Oh, the news rack ordinance, to put it in.
The news rack ordinance, yes, this will, this will be the completion of it.
No, okay, I'm for that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Sorano Keith Baldi, my address is (201) Rochelle Avenue, Rochelle Park. Good evening, councilmember, mayor, city manager. I, the reason that you're repealing this ordinance is because you had problems with it before, and you had to come back and look at it again. When I was here the last time I spoke on this ordinance, and I told you, it violates federal law. There was another gentleman who got up and asked you, do you understand how this violates the federal law, the rights of the news media, and anything like that? I don't think you understood that, and you're bringing it back again, you're trying to pass it the same way. You're asking for a hundred thousand dollars in insurance, but you don't do that to somebody when they park their bicycle or anywhere else in the city, or any other obstacle in the city. There has never been anything in the history of this city that warrants insurance on a plastic box, neither has there been in any other city. When the city of Hawthorne wanted to pass an ordinance like this, the Herald News lawyers sent them a letter warning them it would be detrimental, it would suffer damages, and they decided to take it back and they passed a different ordinance. Yes, you want thirty-five dollars, we'll give you thirty-five dollars. Yes, you want to regulate, regulate the right of way, we'll work with you on that, but when you start using the zoning board to go after the news media, that all those little plastic boxes that has no title, like it's a motor vehicle or something, and we gotta register each one of them with you, well, they don't have any numbers, they're nothing, they're a plastic box, so how do you register that with you? Date, location, whatever. And you ask the lawyer, has there been any lawsuits or anything like this, and he couldn't answer you, and you still passed it. So, you, you don't just have meat in New Jersey Pauls to deal with, you have a speciality to, we all have lawyers, and when I told my lawyer about this ordinance and council, Assemblyman Benji Wimberly, he said, "That is ridiculous." I said, "Well, that's what I told him, and they still want to pass it, they're not listening." I understand you guys are new, and you want to come after the media, you want to make enemies with the media, fine. Somebody told you, some lady comes up here, "I don't like him, I don't like the boxes the way they look, we're willing to work with you, I told you that, we'll work with you." Get the resolution from Hawthorne, see what the lawyers looked at and what they listened to, talk to me, I'm not a beast, I'll, I'll talk to you, I'm a nice guy, but when you pass these resolutions ordering us a hundred thousand dollars per plastic box which has no numbers on it, so we can't really tell you which is which, we can replace it, we can move it, so we can't do that, we're willing to pay you thirty-five dollars, which is what Hawthorne made the deal with Herald News with, now you want sixty dollars, and I looked at it, and I knew why you pulled it back, and I know why you're pushing it again, but here's what my lawyer has told me to tell you, don't force you not to pass it. See, I can't do anything if you pass it, it's when you issue that ticket, we're gonna end up in federal court, and I want to say that in front of all these people, because it's not thirty thousand dollars to fight off the last club you got rid of, it's gonna cost you a lot more money in federal court when I take you there, when you issue those tickets. I know you're gonna pass it tonight because you've been a little bit stubborn, not just on this box, but a lot of other things, and people that come up here and speak and try to reason with you, you don't want to reason with them, you just want to do your own thing. And the funny thing is, when I review this audience, you're the same people that used to stand up here and tell those people, "Don't do this kind of stuff," and now you go up there and you get worse than them. So, I'm asking you to be careful when you pass this resolution, it violates federal law. This is the city of Hackensack, this is federal law, it's not a good thing to violate somebody's federal rights. Somebody tried to tell you that, and you still didn't listen to them, so I'm going to try to tell you again, and you're still gonna be stubborn, and you're still gonna pass it, maybe you'll issue the ticket, maybe you won't, okay? So, I'm telling you tonight again, this hundred thousand dollar things you want from us from a little plastic box is on call for, you have nothing in the history of the city that says one of those plastic box causes damages. Mr. Mayor, you said somebody used it to burglarize the building, well, that's a police issue, that's not our issue with the news media, we're responsible for these people, when you do stuff, Congress says, "We have rights." Our rights is to be the medium between you and them, when you do something, we investigate, we come back and we tell them, and you can't come after that, whether you're intentional or not intentional, to violate those rights. Take your thirty-five dollars, I'll go to your zoning board, I'll tell you where my boxes are, it's no big deal, you know, but you want a thousand dollar insurance per box, you think I can come up with something like that? You're forcing me to remove my boxes.
Thank you, sir.
But I'm not gonna, I'm gonna close up, thank you. I'm not gonna remove them, you want to ticket it, ticket it, we're gonna end up in federal court, and once somebody here already told you that and you didn't want to listen, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else like to speak on this ordinance, this ordinance only? Seeing none? Clerk?
You need a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll offer. Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now, you need a motion to adopt ordinance number one dash two-zero-one-four, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to repeal and replace Chapter 176 entitled Regulation of News Racks.
May I have a motion, please? Offered?
Second?
Second, roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number one dash two-zero-one-four has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Next ordinance is two dash two-zero-one-four.
Is final adoption of ordinance number two dash two-one, two-zero-one-four, an ordinance adopting Lot C redevelopment plan for the city of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, may I get a motion of openness to the public, please?
I'll offer.
Offered. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, at this time, anybody from the public would like to get up and speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come up. Seeing none, offer to close to the public?
I'll offer. Second?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, final adoption of ordinance number two dash two-zero-one-four, an ordinance adopting Lot C redevelopment plan for the city of Hackensack.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered. Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number two dash two-zero-one-four has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Ordinance three dash two-zero-one-four, please.
Okay, it's final adoption of ordinance number three dash two-zero-one-four, an ordinance establishing short-term real property tax abatement and exemption programs. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Offered.
I'll second.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. At this time, anybody from the public would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, now is your time to speak. Please approach the podium, give your name and address to the clerk, please.
Yes, my name is Joseph Campagni, I live at thirty-three Essex Street, Hackensack, New Jersey, I own a residential property that was unlawfully taxed as a commercial property just because of the zoning issue. My property and other properties that are in the path, in other words, the access routes to the area of redevelopment have been unlawfully taxed by the prior administration and unlawfully reassessed. The rate went higher, and there was a precedent setting that it was unlawful because Cubby's challenged it and won, the owner of Cubby's property. And also, this property tax abatement may in fact affect all property owners, including renters and condo owners, because we have been suffering an annual tax, property tax rate increase of two percent, the maximum, every year. I hope that the council will take some time and let everybody else in the city know the facts that may occur if this is set into place, and give us a chance to get a tax, a moratorium on property tax increases for that five years, lower the annual increase ceiling to a half percent in increments, back to the two percent over that five-year period, and also to give property tax abatements to property owners along the route, that is Hudson Street, Essex Street, River Street, Main Street, coming from all the highways, because that's what you see. People should be able to get property tax abatements to fix up the facades of their property, anything that is in visual impact. I was on the phone with the Sensary people, and they are aware that their property is less desirable, because when you come from these directions, Essex Street, Hudson Street, State Street, but mostly Essex and Hudson from the highways, you see decay. We can't afford, most property owners can't afford to make nice facades for their property to improve the rentability and developability of Hackensack. We need some abatements, too. We need to be able to deduct from our tax visual improvements that will improve the overall look of Hackensack, so it will be more attractive to renters, developers, businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kathleen Savile, one-eighty-four Hudson Street, Hackensack. I'm just gonna expand upon what Joe said, it's so true, if we're developed, if we're doing redevelopment, to get to that redevelopment area, it's very important, because that's what people see when they come from other places, and that avenue, those, those channels that get us to that point should be part of the redevelopment and should be part of the abatement, because this is what people see, you want to make it desirable to get to that area, and when you come in and you see this, it just turns you off, like I've been saying for years, the first block of Main Street, if I see that, I would turn around and leave, because we've been trying to redevelop that first block of Main Street, we see the beautiful green, we see Sensary's little park, and then we get to that mess on the, on the right there, that's all in need of, of something to be done. So, it's just as important to get these, these channels developed as it is to do the actual redevelopment, I think that should be taken into consideration, thank you.
You.
At the Pasco Parker Avenue, maybe I'm confused, but does section four, doesn't that apply rehabilitation of owner-occupied one-to-three unit and rehabilitation of investor-owned one-to-three unit residential dwellings, wouldn't that be exactly what this is in here?
Yes.
Okay, up to fifty, it's in here, up to fifty thousand dollars, and, okay.
Yes.
I thought, I thought I was missing something, okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close to the public?
Offered.
Second? Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay.
Need a motion to adopt.
Can I please have a motion, please, to adapt, adopt, sorry?
I'll offer. Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number three dash two-zero-one-four has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay. Introduction of ordinance four dash two-zero-one-four.
Introduction of ordinance number four dash two-zero-one-four, an ordinance amending attachment one to Chapter 107A entitled enumeration of licenses, miscellaneous services and fees of Part II entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered. Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance four dash two-zero-one-four as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on February eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven o'clock PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, excuse me, clerk, mine I have it on February fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry, we changed it late in the day.
Okay, yeah, I didn't get home for my package, so I didn't see that one.
Yeah, the next one will also say.
So, it's February?
The eighteenth, the second meeting in February, there's not enough time to get it advertised, and.
Not a problem. May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer. Second?
Roll call.
Okay, we just, are we on the next one?
No, we went through that, that's not, that's the first reading, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry.
Strike, a lot of new ordinances tonight.
Okay, resolution for the abolishment of Human Service Department?
And now, we need the introduction of the last ordinance.
Oh, I see, my agenda's not the same, I didn't get my other one, okay. Resolution number twenty-three dash fourteen.
It's the introduction of ordinance number five dash two-zero-one-four, an ordinance adopting one-fifty dash one-seventy Main Street redevelopment plan, governing block three-oh-two, lots four, five-point-zero-one, six-seven, eight-nine, and ten.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance five dash two-zero-one-four as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on February eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven o'clock PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, moving on. Resolution two-four dash one-four.
It's a resolution authorizing the city of Hackensack to abolish the Department of Human Services.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Moving on, resolution twenty-five dash fourteen.
Is a resolution appointing James Mangan as Chief Financial Officer of the city of Hackensack.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer. Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye, and I couldn't help but notice that Deputy Mayor was the one to offer on that one. Thank you, and welcome, Mr. Mangan.
Welcome, James.
Congratulations, welcome.
I'm gonna put you to hard work.
Resolution two-six-one-four, please, dash one-four.
It's a resolution concurring with planning board's investigation and designate, designating block three-oh-two, lots four, five-point-zero-one, five-point-zero-two, six-seven, eight-nine, and ten, which is one-fifty dash one-seventy Main Street as an area in need of redevelopment.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second? Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, payment of the bills. It's resolution.
Resolution twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven dash fourteen.
Sorry. Um, there's, there's a change on that which I, which I was told about after your copies all went out. So, it's be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack that the bills and the following accounts being are hereby ordered paid, the total expenditures amount should read eleven million nine-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents, and then inter-funds transfers is three-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and five cents.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second? Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, on to the consent agenda, please.
The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in[1701.58] The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certificate of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. And consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of resolution 28-14 through 47-14.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Offered. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay. This time, I'd like to offer the, or open the meeting to the public. May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, anybody from the public who'd like to get up and speak, please come to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk. Thank you.
My name is Serrano Keith Valdio, 201 Rochelle Avenue.
I'm sorry, could you spell your last name?
B-A-S-M-B-O-Y, A-L-D-I-S-N-David, E-O. My first name is Serrano, S-I-R-R-A-N-O. I'm the president of the New Jersey Pulse newspaper and the Serrano Show. I, uh, I'm not gonna go back to what I said before, but I'm gonna do something different. The property that Parta Fly Towin owed, I made a request to find out what business the city had with this owner, and so far you've not responded to that. And so I'm gonna be going to the state and try to find out what is, what was the deal between Parta Fly Towin and this city? I'm not gonna blame you because you don't like me to do that, because you always say it's the last administration. And this man had a lot of dealings with the city. He had that property opposite 164 Green Street, uh, $81. And I just found out today that you bid those properties six, six prop lots for $5,600. Six lots. And I started asking questions and find out what the guy wants to do is he wants to start renting out the lots for $3,000 a lot. And I said, that's gotta be ridiculous. In that sense, he'd be making $36,000 for himself and paying you $5,600. What you should have done is you should have put a cap on that property, $15,000 and up. If you don't meet the bid, you don't get it. You wasted that bid for $5,600. So if he's renting that property out for $3,000 per property for six lots, he's making money off of these people's backs. They should be making the $36,000 a month. So he went from $81 a month to $5,600, uh, $5,600 a month on that property now, which means that guy's sitting there had cost the city close to three-quarter of a million dollars. And again, you wanna say it's the other administration, that's fine, but you're sitting there now. So what you should have done, you should have taken those six lots, divided up, and there's a lot of people were fighting for it, you saw that. If you had to bid, you would have seen that. Each person bid for two or three or one. But to take six lots and give it away, again, this is now on your administration, for $5,600 for six lots, and he's talking about renting out one of those, back to Parta Fly, by the way, who's got those junkyards still on that property? And I personally sent an email to the EPA about all the bleeding of the gas and the oil on that property. What you should have done before you bid is to clean it up, make sure the EPA passed it, and then you send it out to bid. But you did it backwards. But if the EPA goes in there and finds problems, these people are gonna pay to clean it up first, not you. Okay? So I also heard that there was some kind of monopoly between Parta Fly and the bidders. They got together and they did their bid so they can keep the property. If they're keeping that property so Parta Fly can remain there, we're gonna have a problem, because he needs to move from that property. Okay? He's cost these people three-quarter of a million dollars. What, and again, not you, maybe the other administration, I wanna put it on them, because you said to do that. But you're in charge now, okay? So coming back to me and you, because you went after me, I just found out, I think, I was doing some research on you, because now I have to do that, police officers, law enforcement, we don't, people don't attract them until they make a lot of noise against, and you did. I found out you haven't paid your campaign report finance for three quarters, three quarters back. So I don't know who invested in your campaign, so I can find out who's responsible for you being up there. And I'd like to know that. Did you file your campaign finance report for the last three quarters? Because the last time I checked the law, it's unlawful for you not to do that. So I think it's a $250 fine. So if you're gonna come after the media, we're gonna start asking who you are. So I'm gonna dig, I'm gonna leave it there for now, just with your finance, your campaign finance report. Why did you not file it? When these people don't file your taxes, you go after them. When we don't wanna know where your money is, you need to tell us, you need to file those reports, so we will know. You can't have a different standard for them and a different standard for yourself. You guys were here, and you were yelling at those people. Now you go up there and you become worse than those people. That's not even from my mouth, that's from some of the people sitting out here. So please report your finance, I think there was already a complaint filed against you. And that's in the state, I'm gonna look at that and see what's going on. So again, Parta Fly Towin, you need to find out what's going on there. He's gonna go back and keep his property there and play this guy $300,000 or whatever to remain there, the guy's gonna rent out these other things, okay? This is corruption. It should end, and it should end with you. The first thing you should have done three months ago is to say, look, the contract, whether it's lost or missing, it's illegal for him to be there. But now he's manipulating the process.
Appreciate it.
I'll close up, thank you. Manipulating the process to remain there. I'm gonna be on this until you clean up those six properties. Thank you.
Mr. Rotino, would you like to respond to that?
The properties that were, in response to your question, Mr. Mayor, uh, there's parking lots there that were regulated by price per spot, $55 a month for the, for the number of spots. That's how we backed into it. We did some research and backed into what the cost would be per vacant property lot that was there, and we gave it to the attorneys. People expressed interest in leasing the entire group. So we put a minimum floor of $5,000 a month on the properties for everything. Um, I don't think you're going to get $3,000 a month for eight parking spaces. By ordinance, I think the most we could charge is $55 a month, and that's how we did it. Uh, our attorneys went through everything, and we put it out there because people expected just to take it all as is, and that they would take care of the eviction themselves. So all the bids that came in today were turned over to the attorneys for review, to make sure that they conform and they're legal, and I'm waiting for a response from them. But there's been nobody that wants to rent each individual lot for $3,000 per month, Mayor, it's not realistic.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Ms. Carlson, welcome to Hackensack. I'm Steve Gelber, G-E-L-B-E-R. It's 304 Clinton Place. Um, I gotta, um, first, um, glad to see I have a reader. Since Mr. Amorado thinks I need the free advertising, I'll use it. www.hackensackscoop.com, and the story on the campaign filing was released two hours ago. So I got a couple of quick questions, they can even be just simple yes/no answers, um, that's fine, I don't need the elaboration on, on many of them. Should be pretty quick. So many departments in the city have taken to using social media, Facebook pages, Twitter accounts, et cetera. That's great, great way to communicate with town, all for it, and I endorse it 100%. However, I would like to know if the city has adopted a social media use guideline policy, a policy or guidelines?
For?
For the use of social media by government-sponsored entities? You know, not so much for employees, because, you know, if you have a personal Facebook page, you have a personal Facebook page. If the city council has a Facebook page, that's not their campaign page, but is the city council page. If the police department has a page, if the fire department has a page, if the building department has a page, if the, not so much the volunteer ambulance corp, because the volunteer ambulance corp is kind of an entity and not exactly the city per se, is there a social media use and policy and guidelines?
I don't, at my, I'd have to ask, I don't believe there's one in effect as of right now. I know we've had discussion on the use of social media, uh, before, but I don't think there's a policy in place. No.
Okay, so I'm gonna come back to that in a second. The Citizens for Change Facebook page, that's fine, I mean, that's your campaign page, it is what it is. I'd just like to know if one or all of you, or individually together, are the ones posting or are screening the posts that go out on that page?
On which?
On your Citizens for Change Facebook page, Hackensack Citizens for Change.
That is done by, by some of us, yes.
Okay, so you are screening them. Is an administrator, is a, is a city employee or contractor managing that Facebook page? Posting to that Facebook page?
Posting to that Facebook?
Posting, posting on that Facebook page as Hackensack Citizens for Change, moderating or posting on that page? All right, Ms. Greenman doesn't, doesn't want you to respond to that one. Individually or collectively, just simple yes/no's, because I don't want my time to run out, because I have one more question. Do any of you individually or collectively endorse or promote the censorship or exclusion of residents in discussing community affairs?
Individually, no, not myself, no.
No? Yes, no? No answer? No answer? Yes, no, no answer? Okay, then I will respectfully request that my access to the Citizens for Change Facebook page, when I go home tonight, I'd like it, um, given back to me, because all I've done on it is ask questions to the council, and I have the right to do that. And if none of you endorse taking away my right to ask you questions, I want the access back. One last thing, no one ever got back to me about the email servers, and it's been six weeks, so I think six weeks is a good time, so do we know what the capabilities are on tracking the public emails? Is everyone now on them and using the city email? And how are we doing with the revisions to the Oprah ordinance that was passed, because you guys appeased me six weeks, weeks ago by saying this is a good starting and jumping off point, and we're gonna revisit it? So where are we at with that?
I would refer that to Al Dib. If you could ask him, please, and have him please call Mr. Gelber.
So for six weeks, six weeks no one looked into it, that's fine. I guess that's the way you guys wanna do that. And as far as revising the Oprah ordinance, have you, it's been six weeks, have you guys revisited that?
No.
You have not, okay, so you are fine with what you have, even with the deficiencies that were pointed out?
Well, the deficiencies that you pointed out were, the argument was over transient emails, I believe.
There was, there was more than that, but we can, we can, we can leave it to transient emails even?
No, I would leave that to, to legal, because that is defined through legal.
Okay, so you told me that it's a good starting point and that we would revisit it, but you have not done so, and it seems that you do not intend to do so. So that's fine.
Go ahead, Mrs. Canestrino.
I believe, Stephen, that our conversation was that we needed to explore our entire IT configuration here at the city, and that when we'd done that, and when we gotten to the point where we feel it is robust enough that it can support what we needed to do, we would be more than happy to conform to having everything on, on the city server and having those search capabilities for all of our benefits. We have, I believe, Mr. Rotino, we've contacted someone to come in as a consultant?
Yes, we have.
And he's met multiple times with Al Dib already. We've started, um, it may, it may sound insignificant to you, but we really did not have a detailed survey, I mean, a detailed inventory, excuse me, of all of the hardware and software that is operating currently, right now, in the city, and issues with compatibility, et cetera. So we're in the process of, I think Al has made a significant start on that, he forwarded it to me. And we're doing that in preparation for when this IT consultant arrives, so that he doesn't have to scramble, he has something to start with. We're looking for recommendations on next steps as to how we can get this configuration up to the point where it needs to be. And at that point, we'll be addressing some of the issues that you brought up at the last meeting where we discussed the Oprah requests and the fact that mail configuration would be utilized on a, on a, on a mail server that was separated and distinct, safe and secure, and that city employees would, would conduct all their email business there.
That sounds like a 180 from three minutes ago when we hadn't done anything in the last six weeks. Now, since you're saying you've met with people, are you gonna... Fine, I'll open the communications between the contractor, will you disclose who the contractor is that we've met with on several occasions with Mr. Dib?
Mr. Rotino is handling that as...
Mr. Rotino, will you tell me who the contractor is?
Contractor is not dealing with the council, we have a city manager in place.
Mr. Rotino, will you tell me who the contractor is?
Just like to open it, sure.
So, so you're gonna withhold information for a seven-day, seven-day business period rather than just telling me who the contractor is?
I'm not withholding anything.
So who's the contractor?
Your five minutes are up, sir. Like I said, if you'd like to open it, I'd be more than happy to share it with you.
That's that open and transparent government. That's that open and transparent government. Is that what we're talking about, open and transparent government?
Your five minutes is up, Mr. Gelber.
That's open and transparent government. $177,000 a year for you to sit up there like, like a gangster, like a gangster sit up there.
You can go, again.
No, this is, this is about a totally different thing.
No, he can come back.
This is about Al Dib and the conflict of interest and the censorship of the Hackensack network.
No, no, stop, excuse me. You were up, you had your five minutes, sir. You were up already, I'm sorry.
He hasn't been up for open public meetings.
He was up for... Madam Clerk, was he up for open public, can you read through?
I don't remember. No.
No.
All right, I'm sorry.
We thought you were up for open public, you can come on. My apologies.
I, Joseph Compania, 33 Essex Street, Hackensack, New Jersey. Before I ask for repeal and ask the citizens of Hackensack to find a new administration, I wanna point out that this administration is worse than the last when it comes to Open Public Meetings Act. Just as bad, maybe, but maybe in ways worse. Yes, Al Dib, conflict of interest, somebody who is, who is, who is on the board of, of a lobbying group within the city, who has censored my presence on the Hackensack Now list, who is totally inadequate as a webmaster for the city. The city's web design is poor, the access is poor, and you can sit up there and laugh at it, this gentleman was right, this gentleman was 100% right. I'm sorry I voted for you, that's all I have to say. Nothing I say is gonna change anything, you're gonna do what you wanna do, right? Continue to do that. Citizens of Hackensack, repeal this council next November, let's get a new council up there, please. Please, let's do it. Let's do it. Let's do it, my five minutes is not up. Yeah, I'm gonna run, I'm gonna run, and we're gonna cut this stage short. By next, by next November, we want this council gone, and we want a new interim council with new laws, we want the school board included and not, and, 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 and people allowed to talk, all right? We want a constitutional council that represents the neighborhoods and the people of Hackensack, not a club. This is just like the last administration, okay? Maybe it doesn't have mob connections, or maybe it does, we don't know that, we don't know that.
You're out of board.
Thank you.
That's, that's out of board.
Good evening, Eric Anderson, 14 Bergen Street. I'd just like to...
How are you, sir?
Good, how are you? I'd like to change it up, I'd like to, I'm a property owner in downtown Hackensack, and I'd like to thank you all for your efforts in helping to forward and hopefully rehabilitate the downtown to make Hackensack the great city that it once was great again, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to go and listen to President Obama, so let's get this done with.
You're late.
First, I'd like to introduce myself, my name is Rosalyn Altman, I live at 150 Overlook Avenue in Hackensack, and I've been here about 14 years in Hackensack. And, all right, the reason we're here is we're asking, as member of the National Council of Jewish Women and a Coalition Against Human Trafficking, we are urging all local municipalities to issue proclamations creating human trafficking awareness in the month of January and also establishing January 11th as a Human Trafficking Awareness Day.
I know we're at the end of January, but I have approached, um, your, the mayor's office before, but I haven't had a response, so I was told to come to this meeting. Um, I hope in future years we can establish January as human, as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. It is important. The statistics are alarming. The State Department estimates that between 100 and 200,000 youngsters under the age of 18 are trafficked in the US alone. 12.3 million adults and children worldwide are in forced labor, and 80% of the victims are women and girls. 50% are younger than 18. It's modern day slavery. And this is really horrendous, the average age of the trafficking victim is 12 years old. So we would like to make penalties higher for those criminals involving and exploiting human beings in this manner. I also learned that in New Jersey, there are approximately 152 businesses and stores that are fronts for human trafficking crimes. And from 2005 through 2013, there were 179 cases prosecuted in, in New Jersey, but they resulted in zero convictions. However, our governor Christie did sign a very, um, heavy, um, uh, law into effect that we are the, uh, uh, New Jersey has the, uh, toughest, uh, legislation against human trafficking, and that's, that's to be commended. And it is a $35 billion industry, and it's the fastest growing crime in the world. So I would like to get Hackensack on the right track and be part of a growing voice to end the continuous, continuance of this crime. We want to protect our youngsters in this community, and one way is to increase education and awareness from leaders such as you to guide us. So if you, we have a proclamation that we would like you to sign or to issue to make January a Human Awareness Trafficking Month, and also establish January 11th as, uh, Human Awareness Trafficking Day, and we'd hope that you would join us in this effect. And Phyllis, I want to say something else about the other towns that have come aboard, thank you very much.
Do you have a sample resolution also in that?
What?
Was it just a proclamation or is it a sample resolution?
I have a sample resolution, a template.
Okay.
I can give it to the, uh, city clerk if you'd like.
Yes, please, thank you.
I'm short. My name is Phyllis Betancourt, I live at 208 Anderson Street, Hackensack. All I'm going to do is give you the names of the towns that have already signed this proclamation. Bergenfield, Tenafly, Teaneck, Booton Township, Branchburg, Cedar Grove, Chatham, Chester Borough, Chester Township, Dover, East, East Hanover, Elizabeth, Fairhaven, Fanwood, wherever that is, Franklin Township, Freehold Township, Frenchtown, Irving, Irvington, Jefferson Township, Livingston, Maplewood, Mine Hill, Montclair, Monville, Morris Plains, Morris Township, Morris Town, North Heldon, Precipiny, Randolph, Ridgewood, Rockaway Township, Secaucus, I think I said Teaneck, Warren Township, Westfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
How are you?
My name is Yolanda Colette, and I live at 247 Johnson Avenue, um, in Hackensack, New Jersey. My first question is, um, what is the city's plan to reduce the flooding on the main and John, Johnson Street, um, area off the rivers, near the Riverside exit off, uh, Route 4? And, um, because it is affecting a lot of the property taxes, I mean, property value, and also as far as sale of the properties over there.
You're talking down by, by Jefferson, that area?
Yes.
Yes, I know, it, um, as of recently, I know there hasn't been, within the last, I know at Sandy it was bad, and I believe at Irene it was real bad. And that was just a matter of, there was no place for the water to go, and that's where Coles Brooks comes through, which is a tributary to the Hackensack River. So that, that is a problem area, um. I have to go back and look to see exactly what's been addressed on that, 'cause I can't answer you right now, I don't have the answer. But I will look into it and let you know, if you leave your name with the, with the city manager or the clerk, I'll definitely get back to you on that.
Okay, 'cause, um, I don't know if this is like hearsay or what have you, but I think, um, there's been some type of battle, uh, between River Edge and Hackensack because of the, um, flow of the way the water goes on that, that creek area.
Mm-hmm.
So that backs up, because I think it has to be expanded, if I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong on this, but.
Right, well, last time, I mean, it just overtook the streets, last time I went down there, when Coles Brook overflowed, it was literally up by the apartments all the way Jefferson, but that was an extreme case.
Okay.
In that particular flood, but please give the city manager your, your number, and we'll see what's going on with it.
Okay.
Because I know it hasn't flooded in the last, this past year, I don't think.
Yeah, it hasn't, I must say.
Mr. Mayor, just so you know, Boswell Engineering, I was part of that meeting the other day, and he's actually contacting the state, uh, P10K from Boswell, about flood relief all, all in Hackensack, so I'll make sure that's included. So if you want, I'll get your name and number, and I'll give you a call, she's got your name, just give me your number.
Okay.
Well, you don't have to give the number publicly, I'll get it after the meeting.
No problem. Um, also, um, I noticed, um, one of the ordinance that you said that you were gonna abolish human services. Can you specify what type of human services are you speaking about?
Yes, the office that we have here for social services, we merged it with the county, because we were, we had a limit, we could only give general assistance here, but, but, but by merging with the county, instead of going to two different locations, you just go to one now, and you get everything. Get medicated, housing, general assistance, everything, food stamps, whatever it may be.
Alright. Um, my next question is, um, I want to talk about the youth recreation program off of Hudson Street. Um, I want to talk about how that program has been a wonderful program for both of my children. They've been there since they were at the age of four, and I felt like that, that program, um, gave a lot of opportunities to children in regards to, um, athletics, um, also teaching, um, also good, um, taught about sportsmanship. Also, um, you know, right now, lately, I have noticed that I haven't seen the same level of quality that I'm used to seeing there in regards to how the program is being ran, in regards to how, um, you know, certain things are handled there. And I just want to know, I know lately I haven't seen Earl Warden there, you know, and I'm not sure exactly what's going on with that, but I would, you know, like to know, is there gonna be some way where he will be back to the recreational program to continue to enhance it? And, um, how we're gonna move forward to expand this program? Because I really think there's a lot of opportunity, me being as a recreational therapist and knowing, um, a lot about recreation and the importance of it, I really want to know how we're gonna, you know, move and to expand this program where it gets to be a lot bigger than what it is here in Hackensack right now.
There's a discipline action taking place right now with, with Mr. Warden, and that'll play its way out, and I'll, uh, we'll determine what, when and where, if he comes back.
Okay, so if he doesn't come back, how are we gonna maintain the level of standards that was there before? And how are we gonna continue to expand that, those programs? Because right now, I mean, honestly, I have not seen, I mean, as far as the way that it's being ran, as far as the way that, um, as far as the safety pe- piece of it, I think that, um, Mr. Warden has done a lot in regards to making sure that our kids are safe, they're taught good sportsmanship, they taught, making sure that, you know, they know the basics, the referees, um, all the programs, and I'm pretty sure there's more people out here that would be willing to speak in regards to an excellent job he has done. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Yes, you may.
Respectfully advise the, the council and the city manager that legally they cannot comment on, uh, personnel issues.
Okay, thank you, and we won't.
Uh, sure.
Mildred Gottson, 60 Van De Beck.
Good evening, Mildred.
Hi.
My question is, um, to address the city council, on the program that was held at, uh, Mount Olive Baptist Church last Monday, the Martin Luther King Service, where an offering was lifted for the Martin Luther King Center that's on First Street in Hackensack. And we need to have some questions answered as far as why was the community asked to give a $200 donation to the Martin Luther King Center that we know already that grants were given for this, um, community effort? And we also know that the building was shut down for a period of time on First Street. And now we are told that the building has four apartments that are now rented, in which we didn't know anything about. And when I did some research, nobody would be so willing to answer any questions, but they did say the four apartments that are now rented on First Street in the Martin Luther King Center was done by a lottery, that the names went into a lottery, and the names were drawn, and this is how they got the apart, the apartment. So if that's the case, then we didn't know anything, nobody I spoke to knew anything about a lottery that was held for the apartments on First Street. And nobody has given us any answers, and we want to know exactly, what was the $20,000 raised for? And who has the money, and where is the money going? And where's Victoria Taylor, because she was in charge of that Martin Luther King Center for 20 years, along with a trustee board? So where are all of these people, and why not they telling the community what is going on with the building?
Mayor, I have some information on that.
I was, I was at that service, the Martin Luther King Service, and yes, they did take, uh, they were asking for public donations towards the center. I know that center was, uh, put together with grant, CB, uh, community grant money, which, uh, the city signed off on for them to get that money, but it was a county project.
Yes.
Um.
The county, that, that's in the county's hands, the, the Bergen County Housing Authority, uh, constructed four units in that building, and I, I would imagine that they auctioned them off or put notice out, it was not done through the city.
Okay, so you, you are aware that it was once going back and forth, it wasn't sure if it was the city or if it was the county.
It was the county's.
Okay, so she was there, she was there, and she allowed them to lift the offering, but our point is from the community, nobody, nobody knew, if the Martin Luther King, um, Center was in jeopardy, nobody said anything about it to the community. We didn't, all we knew is that it stopped building, and nothing was being done, but nobody said anything. So we wanted to know what exactly, um, was going on. So if it's being handled, handled down at the county, then I can go down there.
I can actually put you in touch with the director of the Bergen County Housing Authority if you want, when this is done, if you want, if you wait a few minutes, I'll give you all the information, get you in touch with the person that's handling it.
Okay, I'll wait, thank you. And another thing is, from the time that you were sworn in and took over as mayor and, uh, city council, six months, I myself personally think that you are doing an excellent job. Now, I know that you're not going to be able to satisfy everybody that comes through here, but given a, from 20 years back to the six years that you have already been given, I think you're doing-
Six months.
Six months.
It just feels, it just feels like six years.
I think you're doing an excellent job, and like I said, we know that you're not going to satisfy everybody, and you're gonna take a beating, but me personally, I commend you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Marcus Handy, 65 Davis Avenue.
Sir.
Fact of the matter is, you've been in office six months, and you haven't walked on water yet, and you haven't finished Main Street. It's not finished yet, so you've really done a terrible job, you've had six months, and you've accomplished, quite frankly, very, very little other than, uh, the appointments that you've been grossly criticized for, uh, and the, the beating that you've taken in too much of the social media that has been circulated around the town. Uh, I think you've done a very good job, I mean, you've been in, you've inherited a terrible situation from, uh, especially from the financial situation that you've inherited, and also some of the things you've been trying to clean up in terms of, uh, what you've been finding, I think. Some people would say, uh, you haven't been transparent enough, uh, there's a lot of things that you can't be transparent on, there's a lot of things that have to go on behind closed doors, we should have enough faith in you if we voted for you. And if we're not happy, uh, in two, three, four, or five years, uh, then, uh, that's a whole different story. But I think we've seen a lot of progress. Uh, Mr. Rotino was appointed, much to the chagrin of many people, uh, Tom Amorato, not very popular. That's, uh, your business. Uh, you've appointed two individuals that you think can do the job, so far you're satisfied with, with what they're doing, uh, and I think, uh, uh, you should have the freedom to move forward with that. And I don't think you should be grossly criticized just because you've made some appointments that certain individuals in the community don't particularly like, uh, because they worked on your campaign, or because they supported you before you took office, and so on and so forth. That should have no bearing whatsoever. Uh, there's no sign of corruption, you're doing a good job, these people are working hard. Uh, they don't have all the answers, but they are struggling with them, and I think you'd be commended for that. The other thing I would just say, and, you know, because it was more noticeable tonight with Mr. Rotino here, uh, I do think that when people do have questions, protocol, maybe the city attorney can help out. The mayor should address the community and then defer to Mr. Rotino if there's something that he has to add or a clarification he can make. I saw a lot of dialogue going on where Mr. Rotino is being called to answer questions that maybe the mayor and the council should address. That would be my only suggestion.
Okay.
Other than that, you know, write on, move forward, be as transparent as you can be, you know, within the limits of the law, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to everyone, and I mean everyone. Brown, Nita, Sissy, Sharif, Second Street, and Hackensack. Um, I too think you're doing a wonderful job. I've lived in this town all my life, when you came into office, I'm gonna be for real, it felt like the shackles were taking off me and other people, and I don't know who said Lord, but that's how I feel.
Thank you.
Now, I want to address the recreation. Um, I just want to inform the senior citizens, including myself, there's a fitness, fitness class at the Eminem Building for seniors. Uh, Ms. Deborah Rodriguez, she handles that on Monday and Friday. She does a wonderful job with the senior citizens. I'm hoping during the summer, my mother, who's in a wheelchair, will be able to come down and attend that. It's a wonderful program, I do have forms and applications here for anyone who wants to attend. It's $2 a class, Mondays and, um, I don't know if I said Tuesday, Mondays and Fridays. And I am the liaison for the senior citizens, so I've been down there myself, working out. Um, it's a beautiful one-hour program, and I wish more people would be involved, but we are getting quite a few since I've been on board. I want to also speak as being the liaison for the basketball down at the Eminem Building. Um, since I've been there, I've gotten a lot of, I have some compliments, I've gotten a lot of complaints from the past few years. Um, these are citizens who sometimes don't want to address maybe the recreation department, they didn't know who to address, so now they have me to address. They've stopped me, I'm almost, the Eminem Building now is almost, almost my third home. Hackensack, I'm, my home is on, uh, Second Street, ShopRite is my second home, and the Eminem Building, a place where I never thought I would be going down as frequently as I do. I'm down there in the mornings, I'm usually down there in the evenings, and I love watching the children play basketball. What I have done, and if anybody here would like to help me, uh, to build this basketball team, I have reached out to some schools, I have reached out to, um, some people that handle the basketball team. I'm just gonna say this, Jump Start is a program that we have in Patterson. We have people that have developed great basketball teams over there, who may not even live in Patterson, they live throughout Bergen County. So I'm willing to take the extra step and make the phone calls myself and make connections to build the basketball team, specifically the girls' basketball team down there at the Eminem Building. So if anyone here wants my number, it's on this senior citizen paper, you can get it on here, and, um, I'll be willing to help build that basketball team. In order for us and the children to respect us, we as adults have to respect and carry ourselves accordingly in front of these children down there at that Eminem Building. And I say that for a reason, because there was an incident, um, that was, someone approached me last week. I didn't know what it was about, the behavior was outrageous, I was furious. And so at the end of the day, everything was calm and it settled down, but I did not appreciate the way that I was treated. I just came on board as a liaison a month ago. And so therefore, that fire has, the fuel has fired me up to do what I want to do in this community. This is not the first time that I'm doing this, I'm a mother of seven, grandmother of 10, been here all my life, worked with children all my life. So me doing this is not a first, it's something that I've always done, but now I can do it through being a legal liaison. So if anyone wants to help build that program, they can see me after the meeting, thank you.
Okay, Sissy, before you leave, um, you might want to get that flyer to either the city manager or the clerk, so we can get on the website.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening, Carol Martinez, 30 Emerald Street. Um, not too long ago, on actually, January 16th, I Oprah requested, um, all the documents pertaining to Hackensack Medical Center in the city of Hackensack. And the reason why I requested those documents was because I would like to be informed before I approach any of you with questions. Um, my stepfather has been in the hospital for a few weeks, and I found out that my mom and anyone that had to go visit had to pay $10 every day for the day, and $8 for anybody who was there for more than 20 minutes. And, um, I find it to be disturbing, because based on information that I received from community members, Hackensack, uh, Medical Center only paid $1 million for parking space, and it kind of, um, inconvenienced the residents of Hackensack. So now I'm thinking of, as a resident, not only did they occupy a lot of our space, inconvenience some residents, and they're asking us to pay to go visit family members or whomever is in the hospital. At least the residents of Hackensack should be excused from paying parking. It's almost like double dipping, you pay $1 million for parking, and then they made it probably in a few months. I have not received the documents, um, I was supposed to receive them by today. I received a call from the buildings department saying that they don't have such documents, so now I question, why would the, my request go to the buildings department if it doesn't belong there? I requested tax, uh, documents, any contract- I requested tax, uh, documents, any contract that belongs between the city of Hackensack and Hackensack Medical Center. Again, because I want to review them before I approach with questions, I want to be informed. Today is the twenty-eighth, I should have received them today. I have not. I'm thinking perhaps that one day that we had this snow day, I should get them tomorrow. I'm hoping I get them tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Real quick, Ms. Martinez, the million dollars for parking, I'm just curious as to exactly what you're referring to on that.
Um, this is information.
For the gift from the hospital from the developers agreement?
Honestly, I really don't know. What I was told that one million dollars was paying for space and because I don't have information, you know, I don't want to go based on here, say I want to see the documents myself, read, and then ask. So I really do not know, all I know is that we shouldn't be paying for parking at, you know, Hackensack Medical Center, especially if we are residents here.
Did she make taxes or pay, hospital paying taxes to us?
Well, I, I, that's another thing. I do know that Hackensack doesn't pay taxes for all the builds or none of the buildings, that's another thing. How could you not pay taxes? You're occupying our space and then you're asking us to pay for parking when we go to visit members that are there. It's, it's just, it, it's inconveniencing us and it's, it's almost, they make, they're making money out of us.
Right.
Yeah, we look at EMS too, thank you, that's good, you're right, she's right.
I just think we need to look into the contracts.
All right. We'll look into, uh, make sure your Oprah request gets, uh, if they have the information, they maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why they would not be around, this is, this is crazy. Thank you.
Where'd the Oprah request get filed?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Rodney Moses. Rodney Moses, seventy-seven Michael Street, Hackensack, New Jersey. Um, I'm here today to talk about the recreational center and what's been going on. For the past two weeks, before I even go down that path, um, I'm an active parent, participate in the recreational basketball program. I'm the coach for the women's, I'm sorry, for the girls' basketball team. Been the coach for the past four years, it's been a really good program. But for the past two weeks, things have gone a shamble since the recent removal of Earl Warden. I'm here to ask the council to please reinstate Mr. Earl Warden. Reinstate him back to his position as program manager or director, whatever that is at the recreational apartment. Today, there's quite a few number of us that are here in support of Earl Warden. Just want to ask if those that are here, if you could stand in support of Earl Warden. Councilmen, councilwomen, we feel that the removal of Earl Warden was unfair, unjust, not reviewed properly to its fullest. There's more assessments that needs to be done. The bottom of the girls' basketball program has fallen out since his removal. He is a cornerstone to that community. He maneuvers in and out and throughout the city to try and make that program work day and night. My daughter participates in the program, she loves play basketball. But haven't for the past two weeks, not one game, not one game. Why? I asked that question to the council. Why?
As, as was said by our, our legal counsel before, as council or city manager, we are not allowed to, because of this disciplinary action taking place, we are not allowed to comment on a personnel issue.
Understood, mayor, understood.
There is no comment on that.
Understood, understood. I want to ask council, please reconsider, reassess your actions. The removal of Earl Warden and reinstate him. The program is becoming disarray because of his presence is not there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Regina DePosco, Parker Avenue. Um, the, the COA trust fund, finally, how many years? How many years, I don't, would you have to move a mountain to get that set up? Uh, because for the longest time, that's all we kept hearing is, there's a problem, we can't do it, can't get it done. So, and that's, now you have a million dollars to put in that trust fund. And I, my understanding is that will be upkeep for our existing. It, no, no new building, we're not required to build it, anything.
To maintain existing stock.
Maintaining for the existing.
Right.
Okay. Um.
And also, just so you know, real quick, that stock has to meet the criteria of a board of housing.
Mm-hmm, right, right, we do have, we, we have enough, from what I understand, we do have enough. Um, I got my calendar, but I had to pick it up downstairs. Um.
I, I did notice the papers went out late because of the snow.
I didn't get it at all.
Yeah, I saw them out yesterday.
I didn't get it at all and not everybody might know that the calendar's in the Chronicle. And the Chronicle, as I had said to you before, I said, sometimes I get it, sometimes I don't. I don't subscribe to the record, so I don't get it regularly. And I didn't get it at all. Um, it never even appeared late.
I did reach out to make sure that they, that they didn't go out, some of them, that they do go out?
Yeah, I looked around, it's not, like, nobody usually takes it from the bottom of my driveway, so.
Right.
I know. Um, another thing, how many garbage cans are we getting for that price? Does anybody know, uh, for nineteen thousand? How much does a garbage can cost?
They're pretty expensive, those cans.
Yeah, I know. Um, are these like replacing damaged ones or?
We have, we have quite a few damaged cans. Three hundred and four.
Nobody knows how much a garbage can?
I'll figure out four real quick.
Yeah, one, one of my favorite subjects is a garbage can, um, as you know, um.
Sixteen. Good one, Regina.
Um, well, actually, what's really funny is the police officer who told me that I had to get my garbage can out of the street, uh, who rang my doorbell at nine-thirty at night to do so, um, told me that I should come to a city council meeting, tell you guys to change the code. I mean, if that wasn't the funniest thing of all, the absurdity of that night, a police officer telling me that I should go to a city council meeting when I think I've been to every one for about five years. But the code reads at the curb. I know you don't want garbage cans in the street, but the code reads at the curb. Doesn't say on the curb. If it's by my driveway, if it's in front of my house and it's at the curb. I know an anonymous person called and reported that my garbage can was in the street, but only my garbage can? No, no, actually, it did make the guy across the street move his garbage can away from his own driveway. But anyway, um, the rest of the neighborhood in the street, garbage cans in the street. I am tired of being harassed by this anonymous person and they're using the city to do it. These are the same people who wanted me to put gutters on my garage and then let water go out in the street to freeze up. Okay, I'm tired of it. I, 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 I need, I did not need to see a police officer at my door at nine-thirty at night when my son was out at the mall and when the doorbell rang, my husband and I both thought, okay, Paul forgot his key. And you open the door and there's a police officer there and your sixteen-year-old is not home, okay? Because the neighbor called and complained that a garbage can was in the street? Okay? The police officer should have, if it was an issue, should have just moved it, never should have even, even bothered us on it. Um, but, back to the code, um, it says at the curb. Anybody's definition of at the curb?
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk's not at the curb, that would be on the curb.
What was that right there?
For fifteen years, I had been putting my garbage can out there, same place. I don't know why, and people all over the city. I looked down my block, there were other garbage cans in the street. Okay, it was, it was because I complained about the ice, I know that's what it was. It was, that's what it was. So I need to sit down with somebody and this has to stop. My neighbors have to stop using the city to harass us. And police officers should think twice before nine-thirty at night over a garbage can. That was, um, ridiculous.
Good timing.
Uh, Amy Canestrino, Brooklyn Street, Hackensack. Um, just up here to just say a few moments. First of all, Mr. Rotino, I think you took a beating tonight that was uncalled for. And, uh, and I, I, I know, I know that you put in long days here and you're an interim city manager and you don't even know whether, you know, you want this job or you're gonna get this job, but you're carrying on like a good city manager would. So I, I mean, I would like to apologize for those people that carry on like high school children.
Thank you.
And also, I think that, why were you running for council? I wish my wife, because she's taking a beating.
It's your fault. It's your fault.
So, and I live with it every day. But I'm telling you that these same people that are now carrying on before the election are the same people that were supporting the things that you are now doing. The people that you are trying to weed out that were not doing their work in City Hall and other places. Programs that should have been, that should be put into place and should be removed. These are all the demands that these same people were asking that you do what you are now doing. You changed many board members, I know that twenty-one appointments were made to many boards. There's people in the audience that never thought they had a chance of serving on these boards under the previous administrations who are now given that opportunity. Then you have other people that got up here and while they're talking, they look into the camera because they're really actors and they're playing their role. So, and that's you. Yes, it is, so. And I know you a long time, this is, this is your behavior, you can't help it. No, I'm gonna tell you right now, you, these people don't have to take that crap from you. You came to one meeting in four years that I've seen you and you mouthed off.
Sir, I was arrested for going to meetings, I was.
That was a good move. That was a good move. All right, listen, thanks for doing a good job. Don't talk, don't listen to all this crap, just keep doing what you're doing.
Good evening, I'm Thelma Lucky Hurd, two-seventy-nine Parker Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey.
I'm sorry, could you spell your last name?
Lucky, L-U-C-K-Y.
Okay.
Hyphen Hurd, H-E-A-R-D. I'm up here to speak about the recreation center. I don't know what's going on with Earl Walton, but whatever's going on, it's not fair to the little girls that have, we have all, as parents, have paid our money, money for a program and it's not fair to not have practice, to not have games, but the city has our money. And if you're gonna suspend a fire or do whatever you're gonna do with him, you need to have someone have thought about this and put someone in his place to be able to pick up. As a nurse, if you come into the hospital expecting service and expecting me as a nurse to wait on you, if something happened to me, you expect my coworker or someone to take my place and be able to carry on. I expect the same for that center down there, okay? It's unfair because nobody want to be there at eight, nine o'clock at night to watch these little girls practice and to watch their little games go on. So you pay somebody, where is, where is his replacement? You do not put a late liaison that has never done this before and are you paying her? You, what are you saving money by not replacing him or putting someone that know what they're doing down there to make sure that these practice and games go on? It's unacceptable. As a city, as a mother of little girls, I do, I do not appreciate it. Because if something happened to the mayor, I would expect that somebody would be competent enough to be able to take, sit in your spot and run the city. So I expect the same at that rec center, it's unacceptable. So you need to make a decision and make it fast because I do not appreciate what is going on down there. Are you gonna refund us all our money back if you're not gonna allow these practice and these games to go on? Because if you had little, a little girl at home, five or six little girls at home wanting to go play basketball and they can't, you would do something about it. But because you don't have those little girls, it doesn't seem to be urgent. But yet, the city, I don't see the city writing me a check and returning the money. And if you're not, can't even put a, a basketball game together and make sure it runs smoothly and seamless, how do I expect for you to run City Hall?
That's what I meant, that's what I meant, excuse me. In all fairness, this is the first time I've heard, or any of these council members have heard, that basketball practice has been interrupted. So how, I don't know how you would like to expect me to do anything before this five-minute period when you first told me that. Let me have my piece now, thank you, you had your five minutes. It would be improper for us to hire anybody to replace Mr. War, Warden in the interim. He is under suspension, I believe, at the time on a disciplinary action. We are not allowed to hire anybody to replace him. As far as Sissy Sharif being down there, she's volunteering her time and she was not a replacement for Earl. In any way, shape, or form, she's an appointed liaison to a board.
When you suspend someone, you put somebody else there to run the program until you, you know, you suspend somebody for three days? You put somebody down there for three days. I don't care if one of these board members go down there and make sure practice go on, practice should go on.
I don't, I don't disagree, I totally agree with you.
Whoever suspended him should have thought about that.
With the fact that the program should be, should be, shouldn't be interrupted, I agree with that, all right? This is the first time I'm hearing about it, all right? So now, we will deal with that. I wish somebody had came to us and said, nobody's running basketball at night.
They shouldn't have to come to you, you fire somebody or you suspend somebody? What do you think he was doing down there? Running games. So somebody should have been able to look at his schedule or talk to him and say, what do we need to do to make sure this go on? Until they, until they make a decision about what's going on.
Again, had I been aware of it, we would have dealt with it.
Well, the person that suspended him should have been responsible for understanding what his job was and make sure it was continued.
Mr. Manager?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, the department head, the department head was instructed to make sure that business as usual, to fill the slots. He said he had people available. So this is the first that I'm hearing that this did not continue on as is expected. That's, no, it's a recreation department head was instructed to keep it business as usual, to fill in the voids. He said he had plenty of part-timers to do it. No. Yes, it is, yes, it is. It's on the rec board. No, the head, no, the recreation director, the recreation director, the recreation director was instructed, no, no, not safety measures, the recreation director was instructed to make sure that the time slots were filled, that business as usual. Maybe he does.
Anybody else? Seeing none, like a motion to close to the public, please.
Over. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBros.
Aye.
Mr. Pataglia, would you like to say anything?
Well, thank you to everybody for coming and like Pete and Sissy and Miller, they say, in no way that we're gonna make everybody happy. You know, we are trying to make changes to try to improve the city for us, for you guys, for our kids. But I, even if we do ninety percent good, it's better what you guys got before. The reason we got in this race to be here is because we was tired whatever we saw before with the other people. But I, in no way that we're gonna change the city in six months, you know? And the people that are complaining, why they don't go and participate in the elections? We got people here that they, I see for the first time, right? What happened with them the last twenty years? They never complained about anything that would happen in the city. Now we got only six months and we are making changes to try to improve the city, right? But sometimes, no matter what we do, they're never gonna be happy. And it's nothing that we can do about that, okay? With the problem with the recreation department, I don't know exactly what happened with here, but like the city manager said, you know, we instructed Greg to do whatever he is supposed to do, yet to try to compete the programs in the same way. The city manager is gonna address that with him tomorrow because this is the first time that we're here that sometimes they don't have the game or they don't have the practice. I never hear that before, okay? So thank you for coming.
Deputy Mayor?
It's kind of been a volatile night, I guess putting it mildly, but it, it's nice to see all the faces and, and a lot of seats filled here at the, at the council meeting. Um, that's why we're here. Um, whether you're happy with us tonight or unhappy with us tonight, I hope you get some sense that we're listening to you because we are. And we welcome you to come and happy, unhappy, you deserve to be here and you deserve to express your opinions and your feelings to us. You deserve to be here, and you deserve to express your opinions and your feelings to us. As far as hearing about the basketball, it kind of pulls at my heartstrings, because I have a granddaughter who absolutely is in love with the game of basketball. And please convey this message to the community. If some service that the city's been providing to you changes or is disrupted, or you're unhappy with it in any way, and hopefully you, you, you went to the Recreation, the Director of Recreation and complained about this, that I don't know. But if you don't get resolution, our interim city manager has an open-door policy. I mean, send off a note, an email, a phone call, and let it, I, I know that I, and I'm pretty sure all the other council members had no idea that these games, that these children were being deprived of their practices or their games. And I'm sure that tomorrow, we're gonna look into this and try and get an answer and a resolution for you as quickly as possible, because it's important to the community and it's important to our children. On a positive note, we had lots of great things tonight. We had lots of activity that we were talking about with redeveloping our town, looking at our Main Street, passing some new ordinance. I'm very, very excited about that. And I'm hoping that everyone in the audience can feel and sense some of that excitement. This is our town, and we want to be proud of it, and we want to be part of it. And we welcome all of you to share our feelings and, and, and move forward in the right direction with the city. Thank you.
Mr. Sims.
I'm really speechless on the basketball situation. I was aware of this last night, and I got on the phone, and I got three games for these girls, young ladies, set up. And why they weren't ever scheduled is beyond me. I have no answers for that. But the young ladies do have games set up. I promise you that. And that is a fact. Why they were never given a schedule with, on a calendar with games, I don't know. I can't answer that. But I know they have games now. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Greenman.
I want to thank you, first of all, everyone for coming on such a cold and miserable night. It's nice to see a full house. Disappointed with some of the people who attended. It's not a game of gotcha. You know, we're running a city, we're doing the best we can. And if we could do better, we would do better. So you have to trust us. As Pete said, we did not walk on water yet. We might do it next six months, but did not happen as of now. We're trying our darndest to do a good job. If there is anything that we can do, call us. We all open to suggestions. We're all open to anything positive that you have to bring or say or do any program. We were discussing, and I think our mayor is going to address certain things that we'd like to put it out to the public and see if we're gonna get response. We would like to have, we do have an open-door policy, and we would like to invite everyone to come to us and bring us, whether you bring it here to the council or separately to each one individually, and we will be responsive to all of it. I want to congratulate our new CFO. Welcome, congratulations. It's going to be a very interesting and difficult part of your life from now on. I'm gonna apologize to our interim manager. You got truly chewed out for something that was not your doing, and I think it's very inappropriate. People, yeah, people have to behave in a way that's appropriate. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. You're lovely people. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Greenman. Wow, what a night. You know, it's, a great point was brought up about, you know, the "gotcha" word. And sometimes it's about, oh, I got you on this, I got you on that. And that's not what this is about, alright? Anybody can pull that on anybody at any given time. The playing for the camera. I've had people in here, that one gentleman tonight has already called us crooks and thieves in the past. I have a gentleman in the room right now who's called this council racist. And it's as far from the truth. This is the most open and transparent group I've ever seen. We're, we're, is open to everything here. We've appointed African-Americans to the boards that never thought they would get on. We're open to everybody in this city, the whole community. And to be called a racist by a man who's up here to basically sensationalize his, his own life is just beyond belief to me, but I, I find it offensive. It's not out of line when you put it, when you put it in a public paper. You're done speaking. You had your turn. You had two turns. The word racist is only one subject, sir, alright? And when you imply that someone's a racist, it's derogatory and a very offensive term, and I take it seriously. Whether you don't, that's your business, but I take it seriously, alright? Thank you. On a good note, tonight I went over at five-thirty to the Ice House. We have ten Olympians working out of Hackensack. I don't know if you're people aware of that, but ten Olympian ice skaters from, unfortunately, none of them were US ice skaters. They were from other countries, but nevertheless, they're great athletes. They work very hard at their craft. They're out there, they're leaving in a day or two to go to Sachi, Russia. And I got to go over and interact with them and, and speak with them a little, and it was, it was quite exciting. I mean, to be around Olympians. One girl was, this was her third Olympics as a figure skater. And actually, now I look forward to watching and looking at these kids and getting a chance to see them. We moved some great things along tonight, one-fifty, one-seventy, Lot C. These are things that are gonna change this city for the better. This council's worked very hard at moving this thing along, all these developments along. Pretty much can guarantee you, probably next month, we'll be looking to put RFQs out to change Main Street and State Street back to two-way streets, like they used to be in the day, which is a very exciting day. I'm looking forward to being able to go like this on Main Street instead of just like this. So that'll be good. But I want to thank the supporters who are here tonight, and, you know, it's, we get used to taking our lumps, it's no big deal. You know, but sometimes it's nice to hear a nice, a nice word from somebody, so we really do appreciate it from you guys. Thank you, and everybody have a nice, safe trip home. Stay warm. Oh. Need a motion to a jury. Need a motion to close.
I'll offer it.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.